Still muted.
Helen is on mute.
Alec, I know, I've asked her to unmute.
I have.
There we go.
There you go.
It on and it went back. Well, that's obviously because I'm one of the old gods. I've owned property here since 1997 and we've lived in this house in Presbury Village for 20 years. And I serve on the Communications Committee and I've served on the Election Committee. And now I'm Chair and I discover because of the new system, I'm also a non-voting member of the Board. So I have a full plate. Next slide, please. As has been mentioned, the Election Committee was referenced in the bylaws. And our responsibility, we're really narrowly focused on elections to the Board. And through the years, there were procedures that were established and processes and we would get them and pass them on and on and on. But there was nothing formal. So now, the Election Committee is one of the chartered committees. Established with the responsibility, and this is where it gets really interesting, for initiating and conducting all association elections. That's to the Board. Budgets, those CCNR amendments, and any other matters that will require the vote of all the members. And this requires, of course, us working with the various committees who are doing these things so we don't trample on each other's toes. We are now, and we've just been chartered and we've just got two new members, that we're now in, working towards finalizing what will be a detailed elections manual that can be passed down so that we're not reinventing the wheel all the time. Now, we have an election right now. There are two vacancies on the current Board. And following our bylaws, the new directors will be appointed, they're elected by the Board and appointed by the Board to the Board at the March 18th Board Meeting. You've all seen the notices on the gates as you drive in and out. You've read about it in the SRA this week. You've read the article in Semi E News. So, if you believe that you have the experience and the skills to join this team which is setting policy for the SRA, if you're motivated by working on challenging issues, and believe me, as you know, there are lots of challenging issues, and you're prepared to do the work, please put your name forward. Yes, there is work and I'm not going to hide that. I never, when I've been trying to recruit people, I never say, "We'd really like you on the Board, you're absolutely wonderful," but you know, it's not going to take much time. Why am I asking you if I don't want you to commit yourself to it as I have committed myself? So yes, there is work, but there's the reward of knowing that you're giving yourself to help make Semiamu the premier residential resort community in the Pacific Northwest. So if you're interested, give Debbie a call or drop her an email. She'll forward it on to us on the Election Committee and we'll take it from there. And I hope she gets bombarded with calls and emails. And now I'd like to turn it back to Alec, our President, to do the conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Let me add that I do serve on the Communications Committee with Helen. Paul Grino is the co-chair of that committee, so I have some help there. We're going to summarize this and then we're going to move into an interaction with all of you. But let me just go through the information on this slide. The SRA has evolved over a long time now. Its policies, its procedures, its processes definitely have not kept up with the evolution of the organization. The changes in the law, the changes in the demographics, the changes in the environment, the changes in development, our relationship with the city, et cetera. We've been lacking the continuity we need, the means and methods by which the SRA governs and manages. We've evolved into a process that didn't support a successful operational company and the governance needed to make it run. So we brought in a team to help diagnose the problem, propose solutions, and help both the government or the governance and the management professionally govern and operate the SRA. We're near the completion of the consulting contract. And again, I'll state, we have had no discussion about what might come after that. As I said in my opening, there's no doubt that we'll need help from the outside from time to time. None of us knows everything. But the management contract with Joint Partners ends at the end of this month. Achieving our vision statement as it was stated and our mission statement as it was put forward will require a partnership that includes the entire membership and governance and management. And so as we all work toward our vision and mission, we're simply asking for the membership to support us, understand us, listen to us, talk to us. And with that, I would like to call on Paul Grino to open the session to those who have signed up to talk. And he will recite the rules so that everybody stays on track. We've allocated 90 minutes for the open forum. I'm not sure that will fill up 90 minutes, but Paul, you're in charge.
Can I have the next slide, please? I need the next slide.
There you go.
Thank you. These are the ground rules. If you've not already signed in via the chat, please sign in through the Zoom public chat window with your name and address. No topic need be filed. Members will speak in the order in which they sign the list. Members will be given three minutes to speak. After all the members desiring to speak have spoken, earlier speakers may each have an additional three minutes for further non-repetitive comments. The member speaking is making a presentation, not conducting a discussion or debate. They shall not be interrupted by Board members or others in the audience. Attacks on the Board members or fellow association members are not permitted. Profanity will not be allowed under any circumstance. The Board President or designated Board Member, me in this case, will alert speakers when they have 30 seconds remaining to speak. At the conclusion of each presentation, the speaker may submit a written statement to the Secretary for the Board members. Any written statement must be identical to what the Board Member presented, to what was presented to the Board. No additional material may be submitted. After a member speaks, the Board members may ask questions of the member for clarification purposes only. The President of the Board or his designated may respond to the member. With that in mind, let's start. Our first speaker is Thomas Mittner.
Do we have audio here?
You do.
Yes.
Good, thank you. I'm going to use some notes. Thanks for the presentations. I do want to thank Mr. Berkman and the Board for their stated intent to move the association forward on a secure and a better organized footing here. I think that, you know, the Board, from what I could tell, may have been asking themselves at some point, well, what happened here? Because obviously there's been some loss of support and faith perhaps and implied criticism and surely at some point, and I did hear this a little bit at the October meeting, you're wondering, what do we do wrong here? Well, I don't think it's a question of wrong intent. I think that there are people that are questioning some of what they've heard and some of what they see. Many things in life come down to money and this issue with the consultancy is part of that. I personally don't object to the idea of using outside consultants in proportion to what's necessary and what's appropriate for a small association or a small corporation. My background is in small to medium sized companies. Two or three of them from a couple million up to 50 or 60 million dollars of revenue started from zero, so I'm quite familiar with some of these things. So, one of the things that I noticed is some of these details, there's a lot of generalities. They sound great and many of them are spot on. Certainly, I think most of us noticed in the past there were issues of inconsistency with what happened with the Board and SRA. I do feel that ongoing, rather than definitions, mission statements, vision statements, although those may or may not be required in some cases, the real question comes down to the core staff. You said at the beginning of the meeting that what's going to have to happen is we want really a Board which can govern, but a staff which can operate. In a small business or in a small association like this, we absolutely have to get to the situation where some of the things indeed were pointed out should not have happened. We have to have managing director function and probably, I don't know what you'd call, maintenance director function that can handle certain of those things. As an example, how can anyone imagine having a maintenance person or a manager for that? And not issuing protective equipment? That's not something the Board can ever solve. It's not something that consultancy can solve. So some of those details are beyond the scope of all this money that we spent. The other issue is, for some of us, I have to say, does an organization of our size, is it really realistic to have spent hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on this consultancy? But, you know, we've done that and we have some good plans there. I think people do appreciate what's going on, but even at this meeting, I have to say I'm a little bit worried because all that we've heard from the Board is that we've had no discussions on extension of these contracts. There are some specifics I'd like to try to cover real quick on this whole deal. A consulting company that was formed for just one client. Regardless, I recognize that the professionals involved are competent and they've had their own businesses. But it says right in the description that this Joint Partners was formed for Semiamu. Everything else aside, I can tell you, and I think you would know, talking about liabilities and risks, that in any corporate audit, if anyone ever finds in an institution that has a revenue of about a million or 2 million.
Excuse me, Tom, 30 seconds?
Yeah, that you don't have expenditures like that for just one client. It's an audit warning signal. There's a lot of things like that. Another thing here, incidentally, just on this talk about the bank accounts. Everything that the old regime did was not wrong. Remember that the FDIC has limits on both corporate and individual coverage. That's probably why we had many banks. Some of you may not remember, but there were corporations that lost a lot of money, anything over 250K per account type.
I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to cut you off.
That's fine, because they had too few accounts.
Next up, Greg Wett, Mr. Wett.
Tom, or Paul, I want to make a comment to Tom. Tom, you're right, in many respects, we already had controls in regarding the FDIC limits and the $250,000 levels. I think you have to look at the consulting as an investment over time. Yes, we spent the money this year and last. But what we got from the consultants, we can amortize over many years to come. And it's not quite accurate to say that this consulting firm was formed solely for the purpose of working with the SRA. Mitch and Jennifer were working together well prior to being here. They had already entered into an agreement to form a company. We simply said to them, "We don't want to contract with two of you. If you can get your company put together, we will contract with you as one single contract." I don't see that as a real problem, but that is nuanced with some difference, I believe. Thank you.
Next up is Greg Wett, Mr. Wett.
Okay, first off, my, most of my questions and statements are rhetorical and don't require or do not want a response except in two specific instances. One, this is at JP LLLC and our Board. There is analogy that I've heard quite often that a fire department has a fire and they suspect arson. So they hire an arson investigator. And low and behold, most of the fires after that point are caused by arson. This is what I feel that JP LLLC has done to the SRA. One, I want to state my objection to the continuing use of JP LLLC as a consultant for the SRA. In reviewing the contract, it is my opinion the SRA has been overcharged for services that can be obtained at a much lesser cost. To date, I have not seen any improvements in the community. All I've observed are implementation of lots of policies and procedures. Many probably not required, some printing up of our spreadsheets and emails. And restrictions on talking with members of, or talking with the SRA personnel. Number two, RCW 6490525 states, paragraph 1A, "Within 30 days after adoption of any proposed budget, for the common interest of community, the Board must provide a copy of that budget to all unit owners and set a date for a meeting of the unit owners to consider ratification of the budget, not less than 14 or more than 50 days after providing the budget." You have modified the budget, you have not presented it to the membership. According to Washington law, you are required to do so. Number three, to date, the Board has had three certified public accountants who are members of our community. Who have resigned from either the Board or financial committees. What is the Board's agenda such that members who are CPAs are prevented from reviewing our financials? Number four, why is it that we had a maintenance manager for 12 years who loved it here? How is it that a replacement maintenance manager was hired and less than a week later and happened to be an employee for JP LLLC in Southern Valley?
Specific question. I have to ask you to wind it up, please.
My specific question is, Kurt, you showed 274K coming out of restricted reserves. I specifically request detailed information on what community capital improvements, that's 274K, was used for. Those funds are reserved for road improvements, sewers, and other community projects. I suspect they're being used elsewhere, which leads me to a statement that four years on the Board.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off now.
Paul, did you receive my message? Tippi Vaughn has yielded her time to Greg.
Sorry, okay.
You unmute Greg.
I mute Greg. You have an additional three minutes.
In my four years on the Board, the restricted and operational funds were always separated. And regardless of what Jennifer says about spreadsheets, every month, those budgets were reviewed by the Board, voted on by the Board, and passed. Those funds were always separate. There was never even a blurred line between them. And I hate the implication that in the past, there may have been, because there never has been.
Thank you, Mr. Wett. Does anybody on the Board have a comment?
I think I can comment on, the first question is easy. The money that's going to be spent from the restricted reserves in 2021 was outlined in the annual general meeting in October 2020. And the items that make up that dollar figure are not surprising. The biggest comment, biggest item is road repair, 105,000. Entry gate operator maintenance and replacement, about $5,700. Sign, entrance sign maintenance and repair, about 7,000. Concrete curb repairs, 6,000. As a lot of you know, the Drayton Cove easement, which is the walking path along Drayton Harbor, along to the spit from Drayton Hillside, has been closed for some time. There's $10,700 in the budget to address that issue. There's fountain replacement at Rex Park for $5,100. There's stormwater drainage, things to take care of for $2,800. And then we have a loan payment to Kubota, which we bought a tractor for three and a half years ago that we're making interest-free payments on, that does come out of the restricted reserve and that's about 15,000 a year. The most controversial item in the 2021 restricted reserve spending was $65,000, which was earmarked for improvements to the SRA building. Particularly the landscaping outside and finishing the second floor of the office area. So if you add that all up, it does add up to $247,000.
Any other Board member wish to comment?
I would like to make a quick comment, just for clarification. When we talk about the cash that the SRA holds, that excess cash in reserves, whether they were operating reserves or whether they were capital reserves, were indeed in one sweep account at U.S. Bank. Each investment was under $250,000, but they were all in one brokerage account and thus technically commingled. The $65,000 that's scheduled in the 2021 budget for improvements to the building probably will be considerably less than that. But we built a building around our existing people and we now have people sitting in the hall. So we do need to move them somewhere.
Thank you.
I have, I guess, I have one further response to Greg. With respect to the budget, when we realized that we were not going to get $250,000 from the real estate transfer fee, it was only prudent to revise the spending plan. We did not call it a budget, although it, you can, it's semantics. But we made a new spending plan, but did not get it approved by the membership. And we didn't feel it was necessary at the time because we didn't feel it was a new budget because we were not changing the assessment of dues. But I guess that's open to interpretation.
One more comment. We do have legal opinion on what a budget is and what a spending plan is. There have been assertions that are different than that, they'll be handled. And the last comment is that our maintenance manager, Bruce Bishop, did work at Southern Valley. He's well experienced, but he never worked for Joint Partners.
Next up is Karen Zuberi.
Hello, thank you for your time. I just wanted to make a quick statement as you're preparing to think about extending the contract, perhaps a consultant, that I would oppose to that. I feel that the continuation of this large of an expenditure is not physically responsible. And that's all I have to say. Thanks for everything you guys do though. I do appreciate your time.
Okay, next up is Dave Whitmore, Paul. And Tippi Vaughn would like to give the remainder of her time that was left over from Greg to Dave as well.
Okay.
I don't need much extra time. I would like to express my concern with regard to a 2021 budget expenditure of $53,400 that was in the budget and for outside accounting services, following the completion of the consulting agreement. My contention is that if APLLC complied with their agreement, the SRA management team would by now be capable of performing all accounting functions, including bookkeeping. The agreement specifically states that JP is to provide interim accounting management with a direct goal to increase skills, knowledge, and abilities to transition back to the current in-house SRA management team. One would think skills, knowledge, and abilities of an accounting manager would include providing capabilities to perform all accounting functions, especially considering the six-month term of the contract was to provide an intern accounting manager and full-time bookkeeping services. I strongly recommend the final payment to JP LLLC be withheld because I do not believe they can provide the SRA management team with the necessary skills and abilities to perform all accounting functions by March 30th, per the agreement. I further recommend their services be terminated immediately for non-performance. If they cannot perform this deliverable in the last five to six months, I do not believe they can perform it in the next four weeks. And I'm able to balance my time. I think that Joe Southey may need some time.
Does any Board member have a comment, Kurt?
Yeah, I just want to comment that Dave is correct that there is money in the budget, the 2021 budget, for accounting support after Joint Partners leaves at the end of March. But that money was never earmarked specifically for Joint Partners. That money was put in the budget.
I said outside accounting services. I didn't say Joint Partners.
Okay, but it was in the budget for, it could have been outside accounting services, but it might be us hiring our own accounting manager as well, either part-time or full-time. So I just wanted to clarify that there's no decision been made on how we're going to handle our financial affairs after March 30th. We're actively working on it, but we haven't made a decision yet on how we're going to actually do that. But the question is, are we going to go back to a situation where the Executive Director, with a little help from Lori Thorne, handled all of the financial affairs of the SRA? Or whether the organization has grown beyond that and we now require at least some part-time or full-time accounting support? So I just wanted to clarify that no decision has been made on how to deal with the financial affairs of the association after the Joint Partners agreement is done.
Paul, I'd like to piggyback on that. There is indeed something in excess of $50,000 in the budget for those services. The Finance Committee did point out that that is a large amount for outside bookkeeping or accounting services from April 1st to the end of the year. I think we agree with that. One of the tasks that has gone to the Finance Committee is to create an RFP for those exact services. Whether they come inside or whether they're contracted, really doesn't make any difference. But it certainly is expected not to get anywhere near that amount. As to your demands, Mr. Whitmore, about canceling contracts, that's not going to happen.
Next up is Joe Southey.
I'm after Joe.
Yeah, Piggy, you are.
Thank you very much. My name's Joe Southey. I live in Royal Troon and myself and my family have lived here for, since 2005. First of all, I'd like to thank First of all, I'd like to thank every single one of you um who are on the board and on committees for volunteering to help serve our community. I'm very aware uh from being involved in past uh organizations that it takes a lot of work. And unfortunately, periodically you have to deal with a bunch of people being unhappy and have to find ways to resolve it. Um, I I I want, I'm a I'm a CPA who is semi-retired right now and I've had my designation for thirty years. My personal business specialties have been in accounting and budgeting of many businesses and my role has always included working with others in each business to deliver acceptable budget plans by quarter and year and then helping them to deliver results within the parameters of the budgets that were agreed to and often set by those people. Um, I want to use my time this evening to highlight some financial matters within the SRA. And although many of you on this call are aware that I've been part of a slightly different subject in the past few days, I'm not going to talk about that subject at this moment. In fact, from my perspective over the last few months of being involved, uh, the work that Joint Partners has done in their current contract has been necessary for our SRA staff and board members to evolve effectively and efficiently into the future. I'll I'll admit that I was essentially uninvolved and generally not interested with the workings of the association until a few years ago, when a lot of money started being used for a new building to house our affairs, as that caused a significant reduction in the reserves that had been built up over the years. I became much more interested last summer in the association when I heard that the SRA needed to spend about thirty five thousand dollars of SRA dues to consume to some consultants, which I didn't know at that time, to create a budget for the annual general meeting, which I could have and would have completed based on feedback from the board and staff for very little money, since I was working with Alec on the finance committee for the past six or seven months. And none of that money was contemplated in any budget. At the same time, I heard that we were committing to the same consulting group for another hundred and sixty five thousand for administrative, financial and strategic advice to help in transforming the board of directors and staff and the procedures. To me, this is a lot of money and I knew that this total represented about twenty five percent of our total budget from HOA dues for the operating fund. And all of it, all two hundred thousand dollars was not in budget. So it was a question of where was it going to come from? It was never brought forward that it was going to be spent potentially through a town, by a town hall meeting like we're doing today. And when it was asked at the last AGM, why not? The current president, who in the past uh AGM in two thousand nineteen, who promised the residents that any time we said we're going to spend any significant amounts of money outside of budget, residents would be informed and would uh be have a chance to voice their concerns. When he was asked why not, he just said that that was an oversight. I'm looking at an oversight in twenty five percent of the amount of a total operational budget. Um, doesn't really cut it too far. Now, sorry?
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
No, I'm still going. And I know I will need to ask for more time or maybe someone will pass me some time. Um, after being questioned, this consulting form firm through the president told us at the last AGM that they could get funded for these additional monies through the proposed additional approximately three hundred thousand dollars in property transfer taxes that were to be collected from October twenty through December twenty one that had never been mentioned before the AGM materials came out. But these, as most of you know, were found to be questionably illegal and likely challengeable in court. And the residents voiced their significant dis-
Ask you to wind it up, please?
Okay, uh, if you want me to stop, I will, but I've got more to say.
Paul, did you get my message? Joe Green has yielded his time to Joe if Joe needs.
Okay, three more minutes.
Thank you. So the only way to fund their out-of-budget cost was through our resident HOA dues. Um, it's already been covered a little bit, so I won't go anymore on that. I want to have a brief comment on the reserve fund. At the beginning of two thousand twenty, the fund had a balance of five hundred and thirty nine thousand and after two thousand twenty, it had a balance of four hundred and thirty eight thousand, a net decrease in two thousand twenty of a hundred and one thousand dollars. Since tw- since in two thousand twenty one, there will only be about eighty thousand dollars added per my calculations. And according to Kurt, there's going to be two hundred and seventy four thousand dollars spent. We're not looking like we're going to have a very good reserve fund as been represented in past financial communications. Last, uh almost lastly, I'd like to ask about communications from the SRA being a little bit more uh representative of reality. In the past email news that came out this Monday, the it stated that the town halls today and in two and four week or and in two weeks from now, we're going to be presentations and in the third week, there would be Q and A. If you don't believe me, go and see what it says. You have to click through to the actual agenda to see that there were going to be Q and A. And a lot of residents here said, why should I attend if we don't get to ask questions? In addition to that update that was sent two days ago, the financial update states, most importantly, in two thousand twenty, we ended up with a surplus. When upon review of the financial data on the SRA's own website, the combined operations and reserve shows a net deficit or loss of seventy eight thousand dollars for two thousand twenty. I'm not sure how a deficit or loss can be considered a surplus, as Kurt said earlier. Also, the financial update also states, though it's quite early, we have a surplus so far into two thousand twenty one, when the reality is the revised operational spending plan for two thousand twenty one that was mentioned earlier shows that we are in a deficit or loss of a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in two thousand twenty one. Well, on the finance-
Do you have to ask me to wind it up?
I will. I want to say lastly, Kurt showed that we had a cash balance at the beginning of two thousand twenty one of in total nine hundred fifty grant, more than nine fifty. And at the end, it's going to be about seven hundred thousand or less. We need to be concerned that we are churning through two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this calendar year because we are going to be subject to a significant dues increase to try and get the funds back up. Thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you. Any comments? Any questions, Kurt?
Uh, yeah, I guess I need to clarify a couple of points. Uh, with respect to the portion that Joe mentioned about uh non-budgeted expenses for the consultant. Uh, when we uh structured the contract with the consultant, there was a a termination clause that said that there would be no uh cost to the SRA and uh and no uh additional charges if the budget was not passed at the AGM. Uh, now, that's a bit of a moot point because some people have said that, well, the majority of the people at the meeting voted against the budget, but nevertheless, the budget did pass. Uh, uh, but I, so I want to make that clear. Uh, aside from that, Joe mentioned two hundred thousand dollars unbudgeted. Even if you uh disregard what I just said, uh, it was actually only about eighty seven thousand eight hundred that was not budgeted. And that included the first uh three months of the of the joint partners contract plus the fifty three hundred dollars that they that we paid them to do the initial assessment. So uh it it's still uh still unbudgeted, uh but not to the degree that uh Joe mentioned. Um, the other thing was that Joe said that he was a little surprised that the ending restricted reserve uh was going to be down as low as three hundred and five thousand from uh about five hundred and some thousand. Uh, but this was covered in the two thousand twenty AGM. And if you look at the uh documents that are posted on the website, it it clearly shows that the uh restricted reserve will end the year at uh just a little uh under three hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, the fa- the last point I wanted to cover that Joe mentioned was he said that although I reported that we had a surplus of thirty thousand dollars in two thousand twenty, uh, his calculation showed a uh a deficit of twenty of seventy eight thousand dollars. And I guess the main difference between what Joe talked about and what I talked about is I did not include any depreciation uh in in my numbers and depreciation is around eighty thousand dollars a year, which is a a non-cash amount, uh but still is reported on our financial statements.
Further comments?
Oh, I just want to, I want to make sure that our responses are not running over three minutes. I don't think they are. Uh, there is an assertion that they are, but I don't, I don't believe that that's true.
Fine, I'll start timing those as well.
Okay.
Next up, Peggy Richter. Peggy, you're muted.
Fine, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll try not to repeat comments that have made, but I do want to echo and uh voice my support for all the comments that have been made so far. Um, I've looked at this presentation, which is, um, obviously you've put a lot of work into it. I appreciate it. But when I look at that, I see a lot of consultants speak and I see very little that actually benefits our community. Um, as I've said in the past, I think we've paid way too much for these consultants. And uh if if the prior board had done some diligence or put it out for an RFP, I think we could have gotten great work product for a lot less than what we paid. I don't agree that um the sky is falling and we had all these risks and liabilities without the consultant's help. Um, I think one of the greatest risks we faced was came from the consultants themselves. They were the ones, these alleged HOA experts, who proposed the initial transfer fee. And that was in violation of Washington law and we could have been exposed to great liability for that as well. Um, I'm happy to hear that you're going to listen to us. Um, you know, I I urge you not to pay any additional funds to these consultants or other consultants. Uh, and I ask you, if you are going to have any kind of discussion or any kind of um um discussion about additional fees, that you do it in an open session, not in an executive session. You seek community input on it and you have a vote and go on the record as to whether or not you are voting for or against these additional fees. And I just want to point out that um under Washington law, each board member has a duty to us, to the members, not to other board members, not to the president, not to the consultants. Um, there's been a lot of talk about preserving our property's values. How about doing what's right and preserving our assets as well and not spending them wastefully this way? Um, I uh, I don't know if anybody's mentioned the petition, but you know, the reason people got so riled up is because we don't feel like you're being transparent and you're actually listening to us and including us. Uh, over three hundred people signed a petition asking you not to renew a contract, not to do change orders, not to do anything that would result in additional fees and and we're asking you to have a have an open forum and don't do that in the dark. Um, that's all I have to say. I just again echo all the comments other people have made and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Peggy. Any comments? Seeing none, that's the list of speakers as I have it. Laurie, are there any more?
Um, yes, Bill Hayward is next.
Mr. Hayward? Yeah, I'm here. Thank you. Thank you so much and um I'll be very brief. Um, Bill Hayward, I've been a part of the community for a very short time, so I'm still learning, but I appreciate all the work that the the board and the um the committees have put into the work that they put in. It's all volunteer and I really appreciate it. Um, just echoing a lot that's already been said and so just concerned about um probably where the where our money is going is, are we investing in the right places where we need to invest right now? And more concerned about we're going into the calendar year or fiscal year, a hundred and eleven thousand dollars um already in in negative and we're only two months into the in in the year or so and any other kind of financial commitments we make that's not part of that plan would be more of a concern, especially if we're starting dipping into reserves. Um, that's really all I have to say, so thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
I'd just like to clarify that we're not a hundred and eleven thousand in the whole already this year. That that is inaccurate. That is the forecast for the entire year.
Further comments? Laurie, do we have anybody else that wants to speak?
Yes, Jennifer Plombon is next and after that it will be um Mr. or Mrs. Forkade and then Dylan Schickley.
Thank you, Ms. Plombon.
Hi, um, uh, it's clear to me that you have all put in a lot of hard work to make this presentation to us and I appreciate it very much. Um, I was on the board for three years until the end of December. And one of the things that was enormously frustrating to me was how difficult it was to fix something that we saw as a problem, uh to fix how undeveloped lots were taken care of, to fix homes that weren't being taken care of properly, to fix people who did things such as cut down trees or make changes to their homes or renovations that weren't approved and how difficult it was for us to stop that or to deal with that or to react to it. So a lot of what I see Joint Partners LLC doing for the board is clearing up the documents that made all of that so difficult and so frustrating. And if the board could have done it all on their own, we all would have. We needed the help. And I would just ask that everyone be somewhat patient as all of this is worked through and we start to see the changes that we want. It's going to take some time, but you're working on it. And I for one appreciate everything that the board and the staff and J- Joint Partners LLC are doing to help us. Thanks.
Any comments? Seeing none, who's next, Laurie?
That would be Mr. Forkade.
Please.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Henry Forkade. I'm a retired physician, uh owning property in Sami Amu for the past fifteen years. And uh I've watched with considerable disappointment and dismay at the change in tone this past um year coming out of the SRA. I I sat through a lot of meetings uh before and was always impressed at how friendly they were and how competent the people running them were. And um, in my physician manner, I um really kind of disagree with Dr. Berkman and his diagnosis and treatment method for the uh SRA. And uh I think he's out of line with the um current way of diagnosing and treating patients, that he should really have more um respect and participation uh in the care of of the patients by the patients themselves. And um patients in this case are us, the owners, not so much the other board members and so forth, but you you know, I think that um the attitude is too familiar with me and that maybe in some locations, he should be uh considered for recall for his position as president because the tone is really um pretty upsetting to many of us and yet I commend everybody on their respectful tone in their speaking uh at the meetings, as much as it has been in the past. It's a very friendly community. It's a wonderful community. And um the tone of the governance should be more that than it should be a kind of a dictatorial um process in which uh policies and procedures are the emphasis. Um, much, much in this world has gone too far in concentrating on policies and procedures and manuals and and directives. So that's about all I have to say, except that I think the association with the joint partners should not be extended in any way past uh March thirtieth. I think they're too much of a self-serving uh group and have too much conflict of interest as far as their fees and so forth. And that uh some of the people like this Peggy Richter that I don't personally know, but really risk- but really respect what she just had to say there. And some of the others, including Joe, ought to have their voices heard as well as Alec Berkman has had his voice heard in the past year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Seeing none. Laurie, do we have any further visitors? We do have one more. Mr. Schickley?
Schickley is up next.
Would you de-mute, please?
Sorry about that. Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. My name is Dylan Schickley. I've owned property in Semiamo probably for over 20 years or about 20 years. I had a few things, few comments and a few perspectives. One comment is, you know, I've inquired about running for the board, but I'm not allowed to run despite the fact that I own the ability to build, I think it's like 16 units because I don't live there currently permanently. As far as background, I have been a head of the Boundary Ridge Homeowners Association in the past. But I don't know if the board has looked at that. But it seems like I have a pretty big stake in the community and not being allowed to run seems contrary to everything I know. Second issue I had is, why is it necessary to have neighborhood homeowners associations? I, as I said, I was a former head of the Boundary Ridge Association. And having all these associations, some of which are formed, some of which are not formed, that I realize the CCNRs are in conflict. It adds a lot of costs. Every time you have a neighborhood association, you have things like D and O insurance, meetings, administrative costs and other costs. And my thought process is, is that the, the Semiamo Resort Residents Association, we'd be better served to combine all of the neighborhoods into one association. And it would save a lot of costs and streamline things. In terms of the current situation, I'm not happy as a dues-paying member. I pay a lot of dues. I, I realize that organizations need to grow. So I applaud the board in trying to figure out how best to improve, you know, policies, procedures and other, other things. But in my experience, you know, in running different companies, I always found that when we had an area that, for example, had a unionizing effort, the first clue, if we had that, it meant we had bad local management. They weren't managing the situation properly and people needed to seek grievance. If you have a situation where you need consultants, it means the managing board doesn't have the capabilities to manage the situation. And you need to find someone that can, the board that can manage the situation to take care of some of these things. And, and I do appreciate the presentation today. Pardon?
30 seconds.
Yeah, I do appreciate the presentation today because I think the association needs to take care of many of the things that were addressed. But hopefully, the money could be better spent to do it internally by hiring additional resources. And I do want to thank the board for trying to do their best. I'm sure everyone's got different views, but I thank them for that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any comments? See, that's Doug.
I, I think of one comment. I'm not 100% sure, but I believe that the SRA changed the requirements to serve on the board. Initially, you had to be a resident for at least six months of the year, or maybe it was more than that. But there, there was a resolution that changed. And we'll have to get back to you, but I don't recall exactly what it was. But, but the, the, the requirements for a, a, a running for the board did loosen up a little bit over the last couple, three years.
Well, I was recently turned down, so, when, on my inquiry, because I don't have a residence there, so.
Doug, you have one, two minutes left. Unmute yourself. Doug, you're going to have to unmute.
Who are you speaking to?
Paul, do you mean Doug Woods?
I do.
Oh, okay.
There we go. I was unmuted. I was muted by the host. So I just wanted to respond to the, the comment about the neighborhood homeowners associations. And that's one of the things we've had a lot of discussion about. If you, if you can remember the hierarchy of organizations that, that Mitch presented, the HOAs are embedded at the plat level. And to go back and pull those out, we're, we're trying to figure out how to do that effectively, if it's possible to do that effectively. And then what, what are the, the various responsibilities and liabilities associated with that? So that's something that we are in process of actually looking into. And I think that you're correct in that it creates a level of, of headaches as far as management of SRA. And if we could eliminate it, it would probably be great. We just have to determine whether or not it's fair to all those involved in the various associations. Obviously condos wouldn't be included in that. But all of us that are on single-family resident communities, it would seem to me that if we can do it, hopefully we will. But I mean, the, the verdict is out as to how to do that and if we can. Burke, you have 25 seconds.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm not responding to the question now. I just want to correct a statement that I made earlier in the meeting today. I said that there was no money earmarked for joint partners in the 2021 budget. The $50,000 that we talked about was for accounting services. And that was not earmarked for joint partners. But there was another item in there for $18,000, which is earmarked for joint partners for ongoing mentoring of the executive director. So I just wanted to clarify that there was an $18,000 item that was potentially reserved for an extension of the contract on a limited basis.
Thank you, Kurt. Any further hopes we've used at that time? Laurie, are there any further speakers?
Well, Joel Green had yielded his time to, I believe, Mr. Southie. But two other people also yielded their time to him subsequently. So I wasn't sure, but I thought perhaps that that meant that if Joel Green wished to speak, it looks like he does not. Oh, okay. Nope. I just got the message from him. He does not wish to speak. I, and some, if anybody would like to speak, this is your chance, last chance to indicate so.
Does Steve Haynes have a scandal?
No. Doug took care of that issue.
And I think the open session is closed.
Thank you all. We're going to do this again on the 17th. I know we have different opinions. I'm hoping that we can find commonality and move forward. If there isn't anyone else who that, that wants to speak tonight, I would say good evening to everybody.
Thanks, Phil.
All right.
Hi, Leroy. Take care.